All right, seven o'clock. So it is seven o'clock and so I'm going to call the meeting to order. And this is our first meeting in March, March 2nd. First order of business will be to rise and say the pledge of allegiance if you will join me, please.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and thank you for joining us, those that are watching on cable or on YouTube. Just brief introductions, this evening, I'm Lisa Whalen, Mayor. Next to me are council members Patricia Thole, Mark Vanderlinde, Pam Mortenson, Bob Christians, and then our city engineer, Paul Hornby. To my right this evening, Brian Grim is filling in for Mike Barone, our administrator, who is on vacation. Brian is our finance director. Next to him is our community development director, David Abel. Next to him, of course, our city attorney, Ron Beatty, and Paul Falls, our public, our chief of police or director of public safety. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. I don't have any changes or additions. Are there any others? If not, then a motion to approve as presented?
I make a motion to approve as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion has been made and approved to, and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. There is nobody in the audience today, so I'm assuming there are no persons to be heard. Moving on, we don't have any special presentations, so that moves us into the consent agenda items. They consist of, A, approving the special meeting minutes from February 17th. And let me first ask, are there any items that you want to remove from the consent? If not, then they will consist of, A, approve our special meeting minutes from February 17th, approve the regular meeting minutes from February 17th, approving a resolution, approving the claims, and this is new, we haven't had the claims on consent agenda, but they are now, approving resolution recommending continuation of the Community Development Block grant funding of Western Communities Action Network, approval of application for lawful gambling exempt permit for Burl Oaks Golf Club, and a resolution declaring no need to modify EDA enabling resolution, and resolution approving the MOU, the memorandum of understanding with Local 49 IUOE for increase in cafeteria benefits for 2015. With that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
I second it.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Next, our public hearings. Again, we have none, so we'll move on to our business items. This is approving a comprehensive plan amendment for rezone of 7601 County Road 110 West from agriculture to public slash semi-public, and amend the comprehensive plan from rural to park or semi-public. This would be, Mr. Abel?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. The subject property is on your screen, 7601 County Road 110 West. This is merely a housekeeping item. Staff's taking the opportunity with updating its zoning map, which was last updated in 2011, to use this as an opportunity to change this piece of part property from what is currently zoned agricultural, you can see the current zoning there, to what is being proposed as public semi-public. It was bought around 2009 and after we went through our last comprehensive plan update, so it did not get included in as part of that process. That is why the other property to the west was already done and this one was not. So it was really a timing issue as to why it's still zoned ag. So this would bring it into consistency with the rest of City Hall campus, if you will, giving it that public semi-public designation. Does require a comprehensive plan amendment to change it from the rural designation to the public designation, which also requires Metropolitan Council approval. So pending your action tonight, we would forward this on to the Met Council for the comp plan amendment portion. If they approve, staff would then bring back an ordinance which would officially rezone the property from ag to a public semi-public. There was a public hearing held at the last planning commission meeting. Nobody was in attendance to speak. Staff did send notices to everyone within 500 feet and no written comments were given to staff. Two neighbors did stop into City Hall just curious to see what was going on, asked some questions, but that was the only inquiry that staff had got regarding the rezone and comp plan amendment. So with that, staff has a resolution, we're recommending approval of the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezone of the parcel located at 7601 County Road 110 West.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
You stated that, just one, you stated, Dave, that Met Council has to have a final approval on this, is that, did I hear you correctly?
That is correct. It's considered a minor amendment, so their staff can administratively approve it, but any comp plan amendment needs Met Council approval.
And do you foresee any issue or problem?
I do not.
Okay. No.
It really wouldn't change anything in terms of how it's used right now or?
Correct. Correct. It's not in the MUSA, it's not near the MUSA, so has, from a density standpoint, there's no issue, no concern, and in terms of its use, it's publicly owned now, we're just giving it that zoning now, so it changes nothing.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion then to approve the comprehensive plan amendment and rezone of 7601 County Road 110 West.
So.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any further questions or discussion? Okay. Hearing none, then all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. And keep us updated, I'm pretty sure it should go through without a problem.
Yep.
Okay. Next, we have a resolution approving a conditional offer of employment for Kristin Haas Lindquist. She is the finalist for the city clerk position. That would be?
Madam Mayor, that would be myself. So yeah, I'm speaking on behalf of Mr. Barone, who is, as the mayor said, is on vacation in sunny Florida, mid-eighties, I think. I emailed him quick today and?
Yeah, sure. Rub it in, you know?
So, but it's, yeah, reporting for the Personnel Committee, Mr. Barone, Mayor Whalen, and Councilmember Thole. And I guess I'll just outline briefly the memo that was in the packet and sort of the process we went through. This position was advertised back in January. We interviewed applicants initially on February 6th. From there, we brought Ms. Lindquist back as a finalist on the February 17th and went through and went through the final steps with her. And basically, we are recommending to the full city council that she's, you know, very highly qualified candidate. I guess I'll maybe right now outline some of her qualifications, or just, you know, briefly here. She's originally from Mount, she graduated from Westonka High School. Some of her previous experience, she was deputy city clerk in Rockford for two and a half years, deputy city clerk in Coon Rapids for four and a half years, and then most recently, she's been deputy city clerk in, I don't know if I'm saying this right, Des Plaines, Illinois?
Des Plaines.
Okay, Des, Des Plaines, okay, that's assignment, right? So, for like the last year and a quarter. And I think one of her motivations, you know, she's very qualified and she knows the area, she's looking back to move back closer to home. She is a member of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, so she's got that certification. She's also been involved in the Minnesota Clerks and Finance Officers Association, so yeah, she's, I got to sit in on both of the interviews and she's, you know, very, very qualified. And the terms of her employment are, at least some of the, I guess you'd say the financials are included on page fifty, or thirty-six of the packet. It's a salary that's very similar to what our outgoing clerk, Terry Harstead, was at, so as far as budgetary wise, if it fits in, you know, fine there. So, I think that's it in a nutshell. She would base, she would start in a few weeks here, we're still, you know, obviously, she's got, you know, from Illinois, we're trying to have her start as soon as possible. I mean, she needs to, we'd have to give a little notice as well as have a little logistics as far as, you know, getting back here, but we're hoping that would be, or planning that that would be the next few weeks, so. I guess we would, the recommended action would be approving the conditional offer of employment, and the resolution that's on page, I believe it was thirty-eight, to basically hire, approve that conditional offer of employment to, Chris Lindquist is what she goes by, and we'd be looking for the council to approve that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grim. Any questions? I know the Personnel Committee reviewed this and discussed this with Mr. Barone. She comes highly recommended by Mr. Barone and Mr. Grim, they interviewed her, we did not, but her experience and her resume and everything is really what the city needs and what we're looking for.
Yes. She seemed very excited to join the staff here, and she had lots of ideas and stuff and seemed, yeah, like excited to join our team, so.
Any other questions? If not, I'm looking for a resolution of approving the condition offer of employment for Kristin Haas Lindquist as city clerk with the city of Minutrista, as presented in our packet.
Can I ask one question?
Of course.
And I wasn't familiar with Terry's, but do the employees who are coming in here like a city clerk, are they handed or given a job description?
Yes.
I mean, they have a job description?
Yeah, as far as, so they know what their expectations are and stuff, correct?
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was asking, if they're a formal job description.
Yeah, we have formal job descriptions for all of our positions.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I assume, I assume that, but I?
Yes. With the exception of the new position, we have to create that. If you recall, we talked about the HR slash communications person. That has not been written yet, but we will prior to advertising for bid on that one.
I'm assuming then that you use the same, pretty much the same job description as Terry had?
It was, other than the piece that got pulled out from, Mr. Barone's spoken to this before, is the communications piece, that was always part of Terry's, I guess, purview, but we're trying to more have a focus on that communications, HR. This position will be a backup still, you know, communications as far as helping with, you know, newsletters, you know, or other, what we delve into, social media, websites or whatever. But just with the level of the activity we have as far as resolutions, ordinances, data requests, you know, that's calmed down lately, which is good, but we've, you know, we've wanted that person to focus more on those type of, you know, duties, and then the communications piece, they know it'd be, provide a supplementary role for.
Originally, I don't think Terry was, was supposed to do, it kind of morphed into that, if you will.
Well, the reason I'm bringing it up, because from one of the past council meetings we had in discussing staff, one of the objectives was to put more focus on communications, networking, and that's why I asked from the job description.
And that's what I think, this position will help with this and provide support, but the, this other position that where the job description is going to be created and is the one that's going to have the main brunt or focus of that type of?
Again, that's why I said, I wanted to bring it up, because that was, that's one of our objectives that we're trying to accomplish, so.
Correct, yeah. And that'll be the benefit of when, you know, once the job description is created and that person is on board, then they can really focus on it and give it more attention than it's been given in the past.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Does Kristin have a place here already set up?
Um, I know she has family in the area, yeah, so she definitely has places to stay. So, yep, she did let us know that. So that was one of the reasons, I think, even looking to come home as family in the area. I think it's one of those things they say, I think you can never escape Minnesota, I think, I think once you leave, you always want to come back, I think, right?
Except in the winter.
In the winter, yeah, yeah, those two months later.
Okay. Then do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion approving a conditional offer of employment of Kristin Lindquist as city clerk.
Second.
All right. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to offer a condition of employment to Kristin Haas Lindquist as presented in our packet. Further questions? Hearing none?
No, no questions, but can I make a short comment?
Absolutely, sure.
I just want to say, it's going to be really nice to have Kristin on board, assuming she accepts our offer, but also from having her, from having that position been vacant for four and a half months since Terry quit, there should be some budgetary savings or in that as well, I would think, right?
Sure.
Because that salary that wasn't being paid out for four and a half months.
Yeah, yeah. Good point, yeah, absolutely. So with that, then, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So our next order is agreement with WSB and Associates to provide professional services for the preparation of our Wellhead Protection Plan Part II Amendment. Mr. Hornby?
This would be Mr. Grim to start out with.
I could, yeah, introduce the item and then there's probably more detailed questions regarding the scope, then I'll turn it over to Mr. Hornby. Basically, this agenda item is something that is required by the state. This is this part, this is Wellhead Protection Plan Part II according, in accordance with Minnesota rules, and you can read that there on page thirty-nine. The first part of the Wellhead Protection Plan was prepared by the Department of Health. I guess they are able to do the first part for systems with water user population less than thirty-three hundred. Second part, we need to do on our own, so that's why we're here tonight. Attached in the packet is the letter, the proposal provided, professional engineering services provided by, are submitted by WSB. I guess probably the other main item, I guess, is the, probably the proposed fee is to, for a not-to-exceed amount of thirteen thousand nine eighty-nine. So with that, I guess, I don't know if Mr. Hornby wants to chime in anything, or if the council wants to ask any questions or comments first, but it's, yeah, more of one of the required functions that this would be paid for out of the water fund, so that's where the funding would come to pay for this.
Was this a budgeted item, do you know?
We do have this budgeted for as part of our water fund as far as, you know, these type of activities, so, yeah, this is, yeah, covered by, within our budget, current year budget.
Okay. Mr. Hornby, do you want to add anything?
Just a couple of items. We did have a scoping meeting for the, this amendment. What that means is we met with the Department of Health to go through the items they saw under Part One, and so what they do is they lay out what they call a scoping notice or a scoping document, and that's also attached for your reference in the council packet, starting on page forty-six. And I wanted to make sure that was, you saw that, because they do have a number of items that they check off that you need to go through for the city. One of the things that they did point out in our scoping meeting is that with the way the city's water system is laid out with the three separate areas of wellfields, that it does take more effort to prepare Part Two. So that's why our scope, our scope was based on the scoping document that the Department of Health provided.
How many aquifers do we tap into?
I think there's, we're in the Mount Simon Hinckley for two wells, I think there's a couple other wells that are in the fig, and I think there may be one drift well, unless that one was, unless that one was abandoned. I think there's one in the drift.
I thought one was in the drift, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments from staff, otherwise I'll open it up for questions from?
The only other thing I would add is that, once this document is done, then there's also, you know, there's ordinances that are written more from a planning and zoning standpoint, also that would identify, you do have some sensitive areas, it would also define what cannot be in those zones. That would be something that certainly worked with planning on that.
Can you give us an example, for instance? I mean, or would you do that at the time?
As the project goes forward?
Okay.
You'll be introduced to what those, if there are any issues, what those issues are, and the zoning would be run through community development.
Okay. Any questions? I just want to make sure that all of the scope of services is included in this, so that we don't end up with, oh, now we have to do this and now we have to do that and have a bunch of add-ons. I want to make sure that this is comprehensive and complete.
The, that's why we go through the scoping document with the Department of Health first, so we can identify those issues, and so that's why we wait, and I think there's, usually what I prefer to do, since these are government agencies, is to put together a hourly not-to-exceed fee, which essentially is what we've done, but we just had a fee of, as Brian had mentioned, for the project, and we'll just hold that to a not-to-exceed fee.
Okay. I'm not seeing it now, but the deadline is the December 31st of 2015, isn't it?
Correct.
Right. Okay. And then there's, so you have the public hearing, then you have, you know, you have the sixty-day and then the public hearing? Or do you have the public hearing, then the sixty-day review?
I think we have to put a notice out for the public hearing, and then we notice it for review afterwards, but I'll have to get that specific schedule, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay. So the public hearing would be sometime September, October, and then the sixty-day review, and then it goes to them for approval?
We'd actually like to get it done ahead of schedule.
Yeah, I was gonna?
Not pushing the deadline.
Right. And that was, couldn't be my suggestion. Okay, great.
Our staff is ready to go on this one now.
Okay. Okay.
Just one comment. I know you said the fee was proposed of thirteen thousand nine eighty-nine and not-to-exceed. As it's written here, it just says fee of, doesn't say anything about?
We can modify that, if you'd like to say hourly not-to-exceed.
Mm-hmm.
That's what, that's what was intended.
So in the resolution, then, we should just say, approving the scope of services for the amount of thirteen nine eighty-nine, or not-to-exceed the amount of thirteen nine eighty-nine. Any other questions? So just real quick, what is your estimated time, then, for completion in the public hearing? If you're saying you want to do it ahead of schedule, sometime this summer?
Yeah, I don't, we prefer to be into the public hearings by August, so.
Okay. And I'm sure the council will want to review it as well and get an update and, okay.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions?
How much notice do you give for public hearings?
Sometimes there's requirements.
We'll have to look at the statute, but there's a requirement for the amount of notice that we'd have to send out.
Yeah, there usually, it might, sometimes it might be thirty days. I'm not sure if it's thirty, Ron, do you happen to know?
No, there's, almost every type of public hearing has its own statutory requirement.
So it could be two weeks, it could be thirty days. We'll definitely make sure that we meet that.
It's just a big vacation month.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, I still have no?
Yeah.
Well, when we do notice the public hearing, we should notice on the city's website and also through public advertisement.
Okay.
So that's the way it's handled, the entire community is noticed.
And then if we know ahead of time, too, it would be good to get it into our Minutrista messenger as well?
Oh, sure, yeah.
You know, if we can time it.
One of the things I liked in the proposal letter from WSB here is that one of the goals is to develop source water protection plan that is useful to Minutrista and not merely the completion of a mandated task. And so we're, you know, we're required to do it, but we're not doing it solely for that purpose. We're really trying to deliver the best water that we can available to our residents, so.
Anything else? Okay. Hearing none, then is there a motion to pass resolution, agreement with WSB and Associates to provide professional services for the preparation of the Wellhead Protection Plan Part II Amendment with the fee not-to-exceed thirteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine? So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify with aye.
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 All those opposed, motion passes. So now, we move into our administrative items, our reports, and the, again, we've already talked about the personnel issues. We will be coming forward with the public works recommendation, but I think the personnel issues, I'll let either Brian or Mr. Abel fill you in on that. Planning Commission, of course, I think Pam has that this month. The Police Communications Committee will be meeting next week, so we'll, yep, Tuesday, we'll be updating you at our next meeting on that. The Northwest Hennepin League also will be meeting next week, so again, at our next meeting, I can update you. The Minnehaw Creek Watershed District did have its kickoff meeting, and I went to that, and the kickoff meeting was very well attended. I was very surprised, Mr. Abel was there as well. I was, not real long, but basically just kind of letting everybody know what the process will be, and it's a plan amendment, they're not rewriting the whole thing, so we'll keep you updated as we move forward on that. The Pioneer Sarah Creek, I'm the alternate, so I'll let Pam make any recommendation or any announcements on that. I do have a Gillespie Center advisory. I have a meeting set up with a couple of people from the Gillespie Board, that will be also next week, and I'll come back and report on that. And then also, they'll probably come in April or May, whenever they're available, to come and make a presentation to the council. With that, I think that's everything that I have.
Staff will be reporting on the Personnel Committee. Parks will be meeting on March 10th, so I don't have anything for this evening.
I know.
I have none.
I did attend the Planning Committee meeting last Monday, and so, are one of you on March, right?
Yes.
Okay. Because you said this month, and I was February, so I just wanted to make sure. And we just went through the zoning. It was a good meeting, it was short, and met all the people, and we did talk a little bit about Pioneer Sarah Creek, and they were interested in the process and where we're going with that, and we would keep them updated. Pioneer Sarah Creek is this week at their meeting, there will be a lot of discussion there, and we'll bring that back at my next meeting here. And nothing new, I just left a message for Kristin and John about the Spirit of Lakes, that it looks like we are going forward with the Spirit of Lakes sponsorship, and I would like to, if it's okay, to add that to next council meeting as a, on the work session of getting that kind of nailed down, what we would like to do, the booth and all those little details, so I can get back to them, lock that all in.
Okay. And then you could also talk with staff prior to that meeting, and then at the, at the next meeting, work session, will, you can update us and we'll discuss that then. That'd be great.
Perfect.
All right. Wonderful. Mr. Christians?
Just a couple of things. Last Thursday, a week ago last Thursday, the St. Bonnie Fire Department meeting, a couple of things I should share, and Brian, maybe you already have received that packet. In the St. Bonnie Fire Department budget for 2014, they exceeded their budget totally by six thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. I asked the breakdown of why that happened. The biggest share of that was there was approximately a seven thousand dollar fix for the large ladder truck, what we call the hook and ladder truck. The hydraulics and electrical apparently went out of that, and it was about a seven thousand dollar tab. Most of the other lines, they were either on budget or a little bit under. And the reason I'm bringing that up is because per our agreement with St. Bonnie, two thousand four hundred and forty dollars of that, six thousand four hundred and fifty is our responsibility that you'll be nailed for, you'll be, if you're not already made aware of it.
Yeah, I was aware of that, I think.
Okay. And the reason, again, for that primarily was the large, what I call the hook and ladder truck.
Bob, don't they have any, like a contingency fund or any reserve funds that can be used for, if you will, emergencies?
What they have is they have, which goes into a replacement fund, I'll call it, when there's items that are under budget, it doesn't come back to the city, it remains in the budget, which I'm sure you're aware of.
Right. Yep, I'm aware of that, right.
In this particular case, it was a bit of a surprise.
Right.
I asked that question at the meeting, what about 2015? Now, you've got your budget for 2015 very similar to that of 2000. Now, you've got your budget for 2015 very similar to that of 2014. Okay, I mean, it's very, very similar. Are you anticipating any thing like this to happen again? Well, of course, nobody anticipates failures.
Right.
So the question, the answer to that is no. Their budget for 2015 is very, very similar to that of 2014. And I guess this is kind of an unusual, what happens, what I'm told is kind of an unusual breakdown or circumstance, so I don't know how to answer that.
They have a percentage that, whether they're over or under, that they need, they need to keep as far as for, like, contingency-type items. But I think if they exceed it, then that's when they have to basically ask to call in for, to split that difference. So I think they could even mitigate it first with that reserve, and then once that reserve gets down to a certain minimum percent, then that's when they, the provisions of the contract call for them then to be split between the remaining members that difference, which I guess in this case is mainly, you know, us, the two townships and the city themselves.
Yeah, and the breakdown is, and I'm sure you have a copy of the breakdown, but I thought I better bring that up because there's an additional two thousand four hundred and forty dollars that we weren't expecting.
Yeah.
The next thing is, of course, Saturday night, six to nine, is the Moonlight Trail event, which will begin at the Minnetonka Drive-In, comes back through Gail Woods. And I would like to thank, and I think it was very, very nice, and thank the city for anticipating in that. I've seen the Facebook things that have gone out. Minatrista's listed in there, or the envelope is there. I don't know if you've seen it, but that's there, along with some flyers that have gone out, so it's a good start in the right direction, so I appreciate that. And again, the weather's supposed to be in the mid- upper thirties.
It's supposed to be warm, yes.
So if you're, have an opportunity to walk, it's kind of fun.
Sure.
So if you have the opportunity, come on out. That's all I have.
That's Saturday nights?
Saturday night from six to nine. Again, like I said, it starts at the Minnetonka Drive-In, and you just kind of walk down the trail, it's all illuminated lights, and many of the businesses have little stands there. And you end up at Gail Woods if you choose to go that far. Kind of fun.
If I could, I realized I neglected to mention one thing.
I was gonna-
Weekend before last, I attended the newly-elected officials conference in Alexandria. I was out of town the time that it was held, in Brooklyn Center, Brooklyn Park, whichever one it was. Very valuable session, very worthwhile. It was the last of four conferences for newly-elected officials, the last of this election, and there were a hundred and twenty of us there in Alexandria. So opportunity to meet a lot of other elected officials and get some, listen to some very good information from some very good speakers, so I was very happy to be able to go and attend.
Well, what I forgot to mention is that Patricia and I were here, and I want to say we hosted, if you will, the all-city employee meeting, and we're doing four of those this year, and this was our first one, well-attended and very well-received, and the employees really appreciated it, so that was a good, a good meeting. And then the other thing I want to mention, or maybe throw out, is the, what we call our infrastructure tour that we were going to be doing this spring, and this is kind of a question for council as well as staff. Do we want to do that prior to our strategic plan meeting, or do we not have time? I don't know.
There's potentially time to get it together, as long as, I think we've got the March 16th meeting. I mean, you'd either have to call another special meeting or do it on a meeting night, you know, depending upon what you're thinking.
Well, I'm thinking, you couldn't do it in the evening because you'd want it to be daylight.
Sure.
And you'd want it, want to be able to see things. And the other thing is, I'm guessing it would take three to four hours?
Um.
Couple hours at least.
Couple hours, yeah. Last time we were out was a little over an hour, I suppose. We didn't, we didn't hit it all either, though. We only kind of hit a couple of the crucial areas, so.
So we can either do it before or after. I know I'm going to be gone the last week of March, so we're kind of pressed for time, but maybe you can send out an email and we can determine a date for that, because I think it would be good to get it done sooner than later. The other thing I was wondering is, since we are out and about touring, maybe we could also tour and see our parks? Because I know some, some of you haven't been here that long, and maybe don't even know where all of the parks are.
Yeah, I mean, that, you're definitely talking about hours, then.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's half a day. I mean, we could spend a full day.
Okay, well, let's not go that far.
I mean, depending upon how long, if you, it's a drive-by of a park, that's one thing, but, you know, actually getting out and looking at things and stuff. It, I've given tours before of just parks, and that's half a day.
Okay.
So.
Would the parks, if you gave us the addresses, we could drive by on our own time, or if there was anything in, excuse me, in particular that you wanted us to look at, you know, if you could note that?
We can, and certainly we can point them out or drive by them on our route, maybe not necessarily hit all of them, but as many as we can.
Okay.
See what time would allow.
Right. And then just one other quick comment. Did you have something to say?
I was just going to add that I heard with the, the time changing this Sunday, that now it should be daylight until 7:00 PM, so that would give us a little more time to be touring.
And then just one more announcement. The Lake Minnetonka Conservation District, they are having their annual, it's called Save the Lake Banquet, on March 19th this year. That's Thursday evening, and everyone is invited. And if you don't get an invitation and would like to go, let me know. I'm certain I can provide you with an invitation. So with that, staff?
I guess, Madam Mayor and Council, I'm doing the administrator, or city administrator update tonight, and I guess the first thing, or probably main things I'm going to talk about is just an update and where we're at in the couple of positions we have opened in the process. For the building official, we did have final interviews last Friday, it was, and myself, and Mr. Abel, and Mr. Veroni, and Nichols, and participated in those. So I think we have a, or we do have a candidate in mind, and Mr. Veroni is working with them, I think, a little bit this week remotely, but for sure, early next week, to hopefully have something on for the March 16th agenda. That's the plan, to have basically what we had tonight for the city clerk, that conditional offer letter on, so hopefully we could have someone on board there by, you know, early to mid-April. So that fits well with our timing as far as how our temporary, you know, solution to building inspection with Minspec, you know, runs out in May here. As well, the Public Works maintenance position that's open, that we also have a candidate there, and they are going through, it almost could have been at tonight's meeting, but they have more of that pre-employment stuff that they have to go through with the Public Works as far as some of the, you know, physical and that type of stuff. So hopefully that, as long as everything goes well there, that should be on for the March 16th meeting also. And then, I think we've talked about it a little bit earlier at this meeting, that HR communications person is next on the agenda, so it's been a busy-
We've been pushing for it.
So, and I know Mike's been going as fast as he can on some of these things, too, so, but that's where we're at there. I think the only other item that I'll mention, and it's more of just an FYI, is I believe as long as the equipment comes in, and we have scheduled for the speakers to be in on Thursday.
Okay, oh, great.
Hopefully, we won't have, that'll mitigate some, you know, when we've had, you know, members of the audience have a little bit of issue sometimes hearing, so that should greatly improve that. So otherwise, I, those are my updates, and I'll turn it over to Paul Hornby for a city engineer update. All right, so does anyone have any questions, I guess, first, on the, what I just updated on?
I do, did we determine, or were we going to elevate it to Mr. Beatty regarding if we've got exclusivity with Minspec, or if the building inspector could, if they could both be addressing the volume of work that needs to be done there?
Staff, council, staff has discussed that with me. There is no explicit exclusivity in the agreement, but it's, it's an item that we're having ongoing discussions on, and so I think there'll be further input on that.
I'm glad you brought that up. In the event there was a major hailstorm come through the western suburbs, Minatrista, is there a backup? Are we relying on this person totally to handle the day-to-day operation of the building and what's taking place? And then you get hit with a hailstorm, you know, they're pretty minor permits, but, you know, there could very easily be a hundred of them that you want right now.
Yeah, Mr. Christians, I can probably let David speak to it more, but David's been working with the City of Victoria on some, basically, backup assistance type of planning, so.
That's my only concern, is that if there's a storm or something comes through.
No, yeah, we're, we're working on a draft agreement with the city. To start out with, with the City of Victoria, they're, they're very open to the idea to, they have a building official and a full-time building inspector.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the start of the process, but looking to expand that out further than Victoria, other communities that might be interested, Orno, Shorewood, to see if you can use that type of pool. You also, there, whether it's Minspec, Metro West, there's other, there's companies out there that if you get into a situation like that, we could temporarily contract with if there was a major storm event like you're, you're talking about right now. So there's options, certainly, all sorts of options.
But otherwise, we're anticipating our building official being able to keep up with our-
Day-to-day, he should be able to do it day-to-day.
And obviously, there's vacation time, so then you're going to have to have backup, and, yeah, we've thought about that. We've talked about that, yeah, yeah. But good question.
So I guess I'll turn it over to Mr. Hornby.
Okay.
A couple of items to just keep you up to date on. For the water treatment plant, RFP, we anticipate that being issued on March 3rd, which would be tomorrow. And proposals from consultants would be due on March 25th. And then we're looking at the department heads to review those proposals and provide a recommendation back to council on April 6th. So try to turn that around quick to get you on that first meeting in April. I should mention, there are a couple of things, too, we did in going through some of the Department of Health comments on a couple of items through the pilot studies and through some of the other paperwork, that we did add a couple of minor things to the, to the scope, not anything that drastically changes the scope that you previously approved, but takes care of some potential concerns that Department of Health would have. And that is just for some biological issues with the water plant, which we would have with whichever version of a water treatment system we would have, so they would make that same comment. It's mainly because of the heavy manganese and iron removal process, so. And then the, in Public Works, we found that we have two wells that there isn't any documented maintenance performed on. And we, and what I mean by that is, we do, we don't know that there's been any history of maintenance on them. So what you do with the maintenance is you pull the pump-
Right.
-and check it out, and make sure that everything's together, so you don't end up potentially dropping a pump down in the bottom of your well. That would not be good. Wells three and five need to be checked. I think well five needs to be checked this spring. So we're working on a schedule and a scope to go through and prepare some bidding documents for that. But we could do well five first, and then do well three when the water demand is down, so in the winter. That one could wait, but I think well five we need to do right away. So with well five, we'll need to ask the City of Mound if we can be put on their water temporarily. While that work is being done, that could take about a month.
When, when do you anticipate this work being done?
Right now, it's probably May.
Okay.
So we'll have to prepare the documents, get it out to bid, have the council approve it, get the contractor on board. Looking at May, probably first part of June.
Okay. So our residents wouldn't have any interruption in their water, though?
No, they would, we would request that interconnection be turned on with the City of Mound.
And which, which area does well number five service?
That's the central system.
The central, okay. It's not that old, though, is it?
I don't have the exact date on that, I don't have that history, but.
I want to say it's-
There's a, there was a noted issue that was discovered by Public Works, and we need to check it out.
That's the well that's in the wellhouse, just on County Road 110?
Correct.
I want to say that was done in fourteen years ago.
Where's that one located?
South Saunders.
Yes.
South Saunders, yeah. Yeah, and I know it wasn't there before South Saunders was there, and South Saunders didn't get put in until 2000, till 2000. So I don't know if that helps you.
Well, you have to do regular maintenance on them regardless, so.
Yeah.
This one, staff does not have an idea of when that would be done, some of the long-term Public Works staff, and so we need to get this taken care of.
All right.
Is that, that, excuse me, that well, that'll come offline with the water treatment plant, right?
Yes.
Oh, it will?
Yes, it could be used as a backup well, but ideally it would become, it would come offline.
Okay.
Because your well field would be down off of Kings Point Road.
Off of Kings Point, yeah.
Unfortunately, I don't, I don't know that we want to take that risk and leave it go until that time. So it needs to be checked out.
So do we think that there's a, how regularly should it be being checked, or should it be going through this process?
Oh, every seven to ten years.
Okay, so we, I think you said it hasn't been documented, so we don't know for sure if it was done but not documented, or just not done, or?
We have a Public Works staff member who's been here, a couple of them have been here for twenty years, and-
They don't recall.
They, they don't recall that well being maintained in that fashion. So when I say maintained, you pull the pump, you check the shaft, make sure it's in good condition. If it's not, you have to rehab.
Well, it's not twenty years old, I can guarantee you that.
Well, it's, it's in that range I just mentioned, so it's probably four years past due for an interaction.
Okay.
Seven to ten, I should be.
Yeah.
So do we, are we putting a plan in place so that that won't happen again?
Yeah, Public, Gary is doing that in Public Works, so he'll, he'll be documenting these, and then we'll keep moving forward in that fashion.
Okay.
And those are the only two updates I have for you.
Do you know what kind of cost we're looking at?
It's hard to say until they pull it, to be honest, but here's what we would do, is we'd put together a plan specification to offer bidding that would, will list unit-priced bid items that would take care of a variety of items that you commonly would see in this case, and we would bid it out. The bid could come back over the limit to go out for quotes, but we'd only pay them for the work that's necessary. So once you pull it and find out what work is necessary, then you'd only order that work.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be part of the contract, so you'd only pay for the work that's done. So what we do is we try to bid it, so that we're not coming back here to the council time after time for change orders because of something we didn't see, or to come out and just have to pull the pump and inspect it and put it back in, knowing we're going to have to pull it back out and rehab it.
Okay. And is, is that the well that we, if I understand it correctly, that we blend water with? No.
No, that's well two.
That's the one in north, in the north area.
Okay, okay.
So we'll bring a, we'll bring a letter proposal back to the council for that. We'll actually bring it back, at least for well five. If you prefer, we could include three and five, but I think three could be postponed until late fall.
Okay. Have the other wells showed records of maintenance?
I need to talk to Gary about what we have for records on the other ones. I know he's been looking at that between other priorities, so. So that would be three, four, and then the new ones we'll have on six and seven. Those would be anticipated to come, come to you this, early this year to request authorization to advertise for bids for well six and seven.
So we'll see this RFP then, April, let's see, March 16th?
You would see the, oh, the actual RFP for the, what I would do is I'd send it on on the third.
Okay.
We'd receive proposals back on the 25th.
No.
Oh, you're talking about the-
No, no, I'm talking about the well.
The well of three and five.
Oh, the, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Yeah, no, no, I meant the wells, okay. All right. Anything else, then, Mr. Hornby?
That's all I have.
That's it, all right. Community development?
Yeah, I just have one small item, not looking for discussion from council, but wanting to, wanted to get you thinking about, we've brought up a couple of times a master plan idea for the City Hall campus site. So what I'm asking for the council to think about for a future meeting agenda item is what type of process- for a future meeting agenda item is what type of process you'd like to go through to do that. There are many different ways you can develop a master plan. You know, you can rely on your Parks Commission only, you know, to, to go through that process. You can set up a steering committee. Sometimes that's done where you have two members of your park commission, two members of your planning commission, sometimes a council member or two will be part of that process. Sometimes you ask a member of the public or two if they want to be involved. There's, you know, certainly you can have open houses, neighborhood meetings. There's all sorts of different ways, depending upon how much involvement you want to have with the public in developing that, that master plan. Certainly similarly, a survey or a comment card could be sent out to all residents for feedback or input, that's another method of, of doing that. So ju-just wanted to list a few, there's certainly more ways you can do that, but my, what I'm working on right now is we, I believe we, I know we have all of the survey information for the property that we own here. WSB had done a survey for the, the building project back in '08, '09, and then Boltland Make just recently surveyed the 7601 property that we just talked about tonight, so I'm taking both that survey information, putting it together, so we have a master document to work off of, and, and develop that master plan. So likely, or if, if we have time at the next meeting, I'll plan on putting this on the agenda as a discussion item.
Would that be a work session item or a regular meeting?
Well, I, I would start out with a work session item was my intent, and certainly if we, a decision was made, we could then forward that on to the regular meeting to, to give staff direction, but wanted to get you thinking about that, what type of process you wanted to go through so that staff can then move forward on starting that process of a master plan for the City Hall campus site. So the only other update I have is, maybe familiar with the Mater property across the street here, we entered into a MOU with MCWD on the Wetland Bank process. They, they did submit their sketch plan review, so the Parks and Planning Commission will be reviewing that this month, and then you'll see that in your first meeting in April for their sketch plan for subdividing under a cluster development over there, so.
A rural cluster development.
Correct, correct.
So it'll be a PUD?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Any questions? All right. Well, then, anything else from staff? And I think we'll have an update on the hunting zone issue that we've been talking about at our next work session.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that is correct. We're trying to put together a presentation that can show property lines and, and all kinds of information, so as soon as we have that all compiled for you, we'll bring it back and, and have a good discussion regarding that matter.
Okay, great. Anything else? Otherwise, you know what time it is?
I have one quick question. Do we know for sure about Pioneer Sarah Creek? If we are locked into that contract, or what is, what are our options, being we're in that contract right now?
Sure. Yeah, we're, we're still looking into it. In terms of the JPA, Mr. Beatty and I have had a chance, time to review it. We've got a signed copy from Pioneer Sarah. Getting out of the JPA is actually easy, but the, the, the hard part is then what's next? What do you do next? And that's what we're at.
Right, right, right.
That's what we're, we're looking at, researching, and plan on bringing it back next, at the next meeting.
Okay.
Could be a busy work session.
I know.
Yeah. And I know the-
Next level work session, maybe, maybe something like that, slide to April.
Okay. And I think some of that, well, what I was saying is, some of these decisions should be made, especially with, when it comes to Pioneer Sarah, sooner than later because of the budgetary process. And so in order, if, if changes are going to be made, the cities are going to want to know that, and Bowser's going to want to know that before July. So we need to kind of keep that in the back of our heads, so. With that, all right.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, a motion has been made. Is there a second?
I second it.
A second. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
We win.
Yeah, we did.